I hereby reconvene the September 23, 2014, meeting of the Marion County School Board at 6:15 PM. For the courtesy of those listening to the meeting, I am requesting everyone in the audience, please turn off your cellphone or put them on vibrate. Ms. Jane Elsmerman, Principal of Westport High School, please introduce the individuals who will be providing the inspiration and leading us in the pledge this evening.
Good evening, School Board, Mr. Superintendent. It is truly an honor and a privilege to be here this evening to introduce the 2014 State of Florida Reading High School Teacher of the Year. I've had the privilege of knowing Natasha Murphy for several years. I worked with her at Westport Middle School, and one day she decided it was time for her to move up to high school with her students, and I was delighted six years ago when she made that decision because it was the best decision that could have been made for Westport High School. Mrs. Murphy teaches our 10th grade remedial reading students. These are students who have struggled in reading from kindergarten all the way through their first year in high school, and now they're in the 10th grade, and they are still struggling. They come into her class despondent, discouraged, and unmotivated because they truly believe that they cannot read, but something magical happens when they get into her classroom. She is the magician in that room that helps those students dig down deep within themselves and find that reader that's in all of us. To be able to see her in action is something that is amazing. She has the capacity to be in all areas of the room. She knows her students. She knows what their interests are. She knows what will help them be successful, and she not only gets them to be proficient at the end of the school year, we have several examples in our school of students who struggled as readers all the way through school. They get into Mrs. Murphy's class, and they not only become proficient readers, but they become college-ready, and they then begin earning college credit in our early college program. That is what makes a State of Florida Reading Teacher of the Year. She is absolutely amazing, and she has some words of inspiration for you to share, some of the great things that she does in her classroom. So I want to present to you the 2014 State of Florida High School Reading Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Natasha Murphy.
Thank you, Mrs. Elsmerman, for that wonderful introduction and for making one of the best decisions by hiring me six years ago. I could. It's truly an honor to be here with all of you tonight. When I was asked to deliver the inspirational message at tonight's meeting, I began to wonder, how could I possibly inspire you? What could I possibly say that would make you leave here tonight feeling inspired and feeling uplifted? After much debate and backspacing on my laptop, I decided that the best way to inspire all of you is to share what most inspires me, my students. My students walk into my classroom at the start of the year with a very negative attitude in reading. They arrive in high school struggling to read with proficiency. They can read, however, they struggle with understanding what they read, their thoughts, "Here I go again, another reading class. I'm never going to get out of here." Those thoughts quickly disappear once they become my students. It is my mission to change lives, one student at a time. I implement creative strategies into my classroom like small group instruction, independent reading, and computer rotations. There is no better way to reach struggling readers than in a small group setting. In small group, the students build a positive relationship with me as well as fellow classmates, and they feel confident asking questions to understand how to become successful readers. My students take active ownership in their learning, and that inspires me. I begin to see those negative attitudes towards reading change. I have a classroom Facebook page, and one of my former students posted a picture of a book he bought, and his status said, "Look what I bought. I'm so excited to start reading this book. Mrs. Murphy, thank you, and I cannot wait to tell you all about it." Did I mention that it was over the summer? He was excited about reading a book over the summer. I recently received a text from a student I had in my 10th grade reading class two years ago. She said, "Mrs. Murphy, what was that series you got me into when I was in your class? The one I just couldn't stop reading? I wanted to see if the author had any other books out I could start reading." That inspires me. My relationships with my students do not stop at the end of the school year. When their scores come in, I call and speak with each student about their scores. I celebrate their accomplishments. Whether it is a passing score or growth in reading, I celebrate with them. I encourage every single one of my students to keep doing their reading plus and keep growing in reading regardless of their score. And the amazing thing is, they do keep reading, and they do keep doing their reading plus because they now know the importance of reading and that reading can be fun. They now have the confidence to keep reading. I keep track of my students long after they leave my classroom and move on to 11th and 12th grade, long after they have left the walls of Westport High School and have now become a friend on my personal Facebook page. When I was honored with the title of Florida Reading Teacher of the Year, I felt like a superstar. I was waiting for my limo. Where's my limo? Between my classroom Facebook page and my personal Facebook page, all of my students, whether former or current, were congratulating me and telling me how proud they were of me and my accomplishments. That inspires me. For the last eight years, my students and I read Copper Sun by Sharon Draper. This is a historical fiction novel about slavery in Fort Mosey in St. Augustine, where slaves escaped plantation life for freedom. We follow up Copper Sun with a field trip to the Flight to Freedom Festival at Fort Mosey. When I have teenagers show up at Westport High School on a Saturday morning at 7:30 AM to experience what they've just read, that inspires me. Actually, they're so excited about this amazing trip, they show up 30 minutes before they're supposed to be there. When the words jump from the page of the book onto the hollow grounds of Fort Mosey and the characters they have been reading about come alive and they make that connection, the light in their eyes inspire me. When a student who didn't want to pick up a book at the beginning of the year gazes upon a worn path and asks, "Mrs. Murphy, do you think this is the path that Amari, Polly, and Tibbet took to find freedom?" Or, "Mrs. Murphy, if these trees could talk, what do you think they would say?" That inspires me. This past school year, a former student came to chaperone our Fort Mosey trip. He was on the first trip I took my students on eight years ago. That was such a wonderful experience, not just for him, but for me as well. The passion for reading that he developed when he was in my classroom many years ago has grown with him into adulthood. When he becomes a father, I know he will pass his love of reading on to his kids as well. That inspires me. When I overhear a student who hated reading at the beginning of the year excitedly asking a student from a prior period, "Did she read today? What happened?" The negative attitudes students have in reading begin to disappear. That inspires me. When I hear my students discussing the latest book that they have made into a movie and how the movie just doesn't begin to compare to the experience they receive from reading the book, that inspires me. When a student came to me and said, "Mrs. Murphy, I went to the movies and saw Divergent. The book ruined the movie for me because the book was so much better." Coming from a teenager, that inspires me. I had a student approach me at the end of last school year who told me he hated reading before he came to my class. He said, "Mrs. Murphy, you knew exactly what books to place in my hands. Now I love reading." This student happens to be in the ESOL program, and it was his first year in the States. He read the Divergent trilogy and is on Book Three of the Unwind series. He waited until he finished reading The Fault in Our Stars before he saw the movie. That inspires me. I would also like to add that this student passed FCAT. It goes back to my belief that when students find the love, the passion, or just a more positive relationship in reading, then there is no limit to what they can achieve. In closing, I would like to thank a few people who help and inspire me every day, the Public Education Foundation of Marion County and Grants for Great Ideas. The Grants our right each year makes the Fort Mosey trip and other trips, which are free for all of my students, and the novels I use in class possible. For the last nine years, I have been able to write and receive two grants each school year. This has given my students $18,000 of novels and experiential learning opportunities. I want to thank my students, both past and present. They teach me as much as I teach them. I would like to thank Mrs. Elsmerman for giving me the freedom and support that makes it possible for me to do what I do for my kids each and every year. I want to thank Ginger Cruz, my reading coach, for always guiding me in the right direction. I would like to thank them both for nominating me for Florida Reading Association's High School Reading Teacher of the Year. Have I shared with you that it is an honor and a privilege to change the lives of many of my students each and every day? I hope that this brief glimpse of the success of my students will inspire you, as you meet this evening, to make decisions that impact the students in Marion County public schools. Thank you for your time. And I will now say the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I'd like to say something.
Mrs. Murphy, would you come back to the point?
You can't leave yet. So proud of you. And I'm listening to your... And Mrs. Elsmerman, I have something to ask you, too. I'm looking at two stars in education in the state of Florida, and we have such a reading problem in our high schools. I heard you say you use Reading Plus.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. I know we've got other high schools that have some reading problems, and I know that some of the schools use accelerated reading and some use Reading Plus. While the Principal of the Year is standing in front of me, which do you prefer?
Instructionally, at the high school level, we have had great success with Reading Plus, and we've been able to document that it's been very successful.
Can you give me any type of, like, a brief difference between accelerated reading for the high school? I'm speaking only high school.
I really can't speak to the other program because we've not used it. We looked at what we believed would help move our students forward, and that would give them the ability to improve the quality of their reading as well as improve the speed at which they read and their comprehension, and we looked for that instructional model. So that's what we were looking for, and we chose Reading Plus.
Well, I sure hope that everyone in curriculum's listening tonight, because if you're having this kind of success with Reading Plus, I think that we don't all need to reinvent the wheel. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Mrs. Murphy, Mrs. Elsmerman, on behalf of all of us, we want to congratulate you for a job well done, and I know how much time you all spend at your schools making this thing work. So I know all of the students are very pleased just to be on the campus with you guys. And again, on behalf of the board, thank you for a job well done.
Mrs. Murphy, thank you so much for connecting with your kids on Facebook because that's where it's at today. You know you've got to do it.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, with the exception of the Lake Weir High Tower lease under Item C-15, I recommend approval of the agenda for the September 23, 2014, School Board meeting with the materials in the Board Packet. Those materials distributed to Board members at the meeting. The audio recording and DVD included as part of the official record of the meeting.
May I have a motion on the superintendent's recommendation? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Ely, second by Mrs. Borton.
Number three.
All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to approve the minutes for the August 14, 2014 Administrative Briefing and Work Session? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
May I have a motion to adopt the revised Board Policy 5.0 Student Assignment? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this Board Policy has been revised to address open enrollment for students.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised Board Policy? Seeing none. We call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I'm having trouble getting there. I went over to the policy.
May I have a motion to adopt the revised Job Classification Description for a Dean? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Mr. Superintendent.
Mr. Chairman, this Job Classification Description has been revised in order to clarify appropriate qualifications and to provide additional information in order to make all of our job descriptions consistent.
I declare a public hearing. Is there anyone present who wish to address the revised Job Classification Description? Seeing none. Call the question. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda with the exception of Lake Weir High School Tower lease under Item C-15, which has been withdrawn entirely from the agenda, and Item C-20, which has been placed on the regular agenda for discussion?
So moved.
Second.
May I have a motion? Wait a minute. It was Ms. Ely and Ms. Borton. All in favor, signify by saying aye. May I have a motion to approve the revised 2014-2015 School Level and District Level Staffing Plan? May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely.
I have some discussion.
We have some discussion. Mrs. Stacy.
Yes. I have requested a copy of the staffing plan with warm bodies filled in. I also requested information on how many unstaffed positions on the staffing plan, that there is a ghost there, not a real-life person, and so I'll be looking forward to receiving that. When I look back at our budgets over the last couple of years, I look at our 1213 budget. Our actual was 175 million under the instructional category, under the instructional function, I guess is what I'm supposed to call it. And then I look at the actual for 1314, which was 174 million, and then we get to 2014-15. I'm looking, and I know the staffing plan relates to all of this, and this is the reason I can't support the staffing plan. We jumped from, in 1213, we had 2% more number of students in the school system, and between weighted and unweighted FTEs, I looked at it in every different direction, and our budget is $18 million more to educate fewer students. I've been in contact with Mrs. Boston Ellis about the whys and wherefores and everything, so she's going to be printing me a copy of payroll. I don't know where, I understand where, I understand where some of the money came from, but I can't explain $10 million of where this money came from when we have fewer students, but our budget is larger in the instructional area. Back in 1213, it was 175 million, and we had art, music, and PE at all the schools. I'm not going to speak about the media specialists because they're in their own category, but we had PE fully funded, and we had art and music, and the only place we were sharing, we had Spar and Anthony, I believe, were the two schools that shared, and 8th Street may have had a part-time, but everyone else had it. We almost met class size that year, but not quite. And then last year, and then, so this year, we have a budget that's $18 million more. We cannot afford our art and music teachers, where when we had fewer students in 1213, we had them, and so I'm just concerned about where I see that, you know, in the other areas where things have changed that concern me, but our instructional budget considerably, you know, concerns me considerably. So because of these things, I can't support the staffing plan because I just don't really know what's, I don't know who's, I know we have positions there. I don't even know if anyone's connected to these positions, and I have people in the community that's, they're going over this, they're looking at it on the website, and it's a problem for us. You know, they're saying we have a slush fund, and I know Mr. James has spoken before about not having money in his pocket, but there's money, there's money that keeps showing up at the end of every year, and if we can't have our teachers in the classroom that we need to have, then we need to rebuild the staffing plan the other direction. If in 1213, we could afford, we had more students and could have all of the programs that we discontinued last year, this year we have less students, and we're spending $18 million more, and we still don't have those programs, something's just deadly wrong with this entire staffing plan. But thank you.
Okay. Any other comments on that? Okay, seeing none. I just want to say this in reference to the staffing plan. Each one of our staffing plans, and I notice you went back to 1213, 1415, and all of them are a little different, and they have different components. Your concerns are well-taken, and I know you've been working with Ms. Ellis, so she will answer those questions for you. Board, are there any other comments on that?
I have a question. Because I know when we first ran over the staffing plan way back, I think it was in April, am I right? We were told we wanted to meet class size this year, especially since how much money we had to pay out.
Right. That's why, so I can find some of the money.
And I realize how the state funds us, so there's a pattern in when we receive our money and when we don't receive our money. So I understand your concerns, and I want you to know they're here, but I know that we've made some changes, and that's why we have this amendment before us, and I do believe that those positions are really needed, you know? So I'm going to support this.
Mr. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm very pleased and proud of what our Curriculum Department, what Mr. Langford's Department, and what our Budgeting and Finance Department have created. We will attempt to get the information that Mrs. Stacy has required or requested, but I'm very comfortable with recommending this staffing plan to you today, as we have already gone over in numerous work sessions. Thank you, sir.
Okay. Mrs. Ely?
I'm very comfortable with the staffing plan as well. We've been working on this since April. We know that we need art, music, PE, media vocational in secondary, and we can't put all of that in and still keep our reserve, so I'm comfortable with this. I know we're going to move forward with this, and we have, we have a lot of positives going right now. The November half-cent referendum is going to be, one mil, I'm sorry, is going to be happening, and I really feel very comfortable that we'll be able to get everything back in, keep our reserve, and not be concerned about this from year to year. I think it's going to be a future for Marion County schools.
Okay, thank you, Board. All in favor of the staffing plan, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The motion passed. The motion passed 3-2. May I have a motion to approve the amended real estate option to purchase, a purchase agreement and to exercise the options to purchase a 29-acre site in northwest Marion Oaks, a 65-acre site in southwest Marion Oak, and a 13-acre site in southeast Marion Oaks? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Ms. Ely. It was moved by Ms. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Are there any discussion?
I did speak about this as far as looking at the options in Silver Spring Shores because I believe that that's an area where we're going to need a school before Marion Oaks, even though we're looking to purchase this property. We really have a big need, and I talked to Mr. Hurley about that. He's going to be looking into it. He's looked at property there, and he's, we don't have anything solid, but I would hope that you continue to look there. Thank you.
Are there any other discussion? Seeing none. All in favor, signify by saying aye. The motion passed 5-0. May I have a motion to approve the agreement number DESF-10362 with the Marion County School Board for a coordinator, one curriculum, and instruction from October 1, 2014 through June 30, 2015? May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second.
It was moved by Mrs. Borton, second by Mrs. Ely. Miss Stacy, you withdrew this item.
Yes, I did. Back in June, when the DESF agreement came before me, I decided to support that and not make fuss about it because it was presented to me such that we might have an employee, and they specifically spoke to me about Mrs. Boston Ellis, if she retired, and we were in the middle of a budget issue, and she retired in May, and we didn't have our budget and everything wrapped up until September and have everything done, then it would give us a way to keep extremely important people that were really putting the pencil to the paper for us, and that's understanding. And so now it looks like, you know, we have an employee that, and I won't say the name, we have an employee that has been in the drop program for five years. She retires next week, and we want to continue her employment here. In looking at the contract, there's just all kinds of things about it. First of all, we have known for five years that this employee was going to retire, and in speaking with Mrs. Crisalka, you know, she said, "This gives us a chance. Sometimes we can't really get the position filled really quickly," but we've had five years, and granted, Mr. Tomlin's administration has only been here 20 months, but we have teachers and we have administrators all the time that, you know, different things happen, and they might have to leave the state of Florida, and they give us two weeks' notice, and we've managed to, the sky doesn't fall, and we manage to keep things going. I just hate going into this DESF the way we're going into it because it almost looks like the bureaucrats' promised land. You know, if you stay with me in elections and campaigns and you do things, and, you know, you end up getting in the promised land of continued employment, extra things, when it's really going against state statute. The state statute for general powers for the school board members, Statute 1001.41, when it talks about the administrative powers, it talks about the board authority of employees coming before the board and the board having the right to, if they have issues or whatever, it's brought to them. With DESF, they don't give us a name. It just comes because it's almost like a, I guess, a staff leasing program or rent an employee or something from them, and it comes without a name, and it really, they could really send us anyone, but I guess we have some type of private arrangement where they cooperate with us. And the board, it completely usurps the board policy that, actually, I looked for our board... And the board, it completely usurps the board policy that, actually, I looked for our board policy, and it's actually quoting a whole different statute, because it hasn't been upgraded, which I find interesting. We've upgraded all these other policies, but we haven't upgraded the school board policy, because we haven't upgraded our ability to govern, but we've upgraded everything else. And so I'd like for, maybe we need to take a look at that in the near future. It almost leads me to another board policy. We have six point one five, and it's fraud, because I feel like it's fraudulent to try to usurp the meaning of the legislature, where people don't come back for a year, and they, we do what we're supposed to do. And I can see in very extenuating circumstances if we have someone that just absolutely has to stay. When I'm looking at her contract, this DESF contract, not really hers, but the DESF contract, I remember when we had a parent contract that was drawn up. Oh, we had all of type things, I mean, we even had where they had to go to the bathroom at for the parents to come in. So I compared it to contracted, other contracted services and different things, and the district, thankfully, meshed it to where it was like the other contracts. This contract from DESF has absolutely no liability insurance included. It doesn't speak on who pays Workman's comp. It doesn't talk about absolutely anything. It just, just like a blank thing. I don't even know, like, if our employee is injured, is it our responsibility? Because all of our other contracted services, our speech therapists and everyone, they come here with, you know, million-dollar liability policies and different things. This has nothing. And so it's not like we're hiring someone to just come in and pressure-clean the building. We're hiring a seventy-one-thousand-dollar employee. We have people in this district that have worked, and we have people that, you know, could easily move into that position. This is not a position that is what I would, what, I mean, what I would consider to be something that we can't, we can't work out. But, and then I look at the vacation pay. There's something like almost four weeks' vacation pay that goes along with this. So her salary's seventy-one thousand and some change, but then there's vacation pay that comes with it. Then she's got nine days' sick leave. I've never had a leased employee that comes in from staff leasing or any place that we lease that comes with all of these benefits that we pay for, when it's supposed to be saving us money. And so I do believe that if we advertise that position, there are a lot of young media specialist teachers that would apply and easily apply. I know it's supposedly to save money at seventy-one thousand, because I checked her salary, she's at seventy-six thousand, but so we do save money and not pay in her benefits. But I'm sure we have young teachers and young media specialists that would love to move into this position and easily do it for what we would be paying this company, and we would have someone to move in. I asked Mrs. Crisalka, I said, well, okay, we, you've been here twenty, this administration's been here twenty months, and we haven't looked at this position that was retiring. So what are we going to do in June? That's that many more months. Of the eight months between now and June when that contract ends, there's almost between holidays and different things, because she gets all the paid holidays, too. There's going to be like two months that this employee's not even here. So basically, she's off twenty-five percent of the time, and yet, we can't do without her, but yet, she has a lot of vacation while she's here, and someone's going to have to cover her position when she's on vacation. So I'm really seriously concerned that we have, you know, I'm disappointed in myself that I didn't speak up more. I guess I kind of gave the district a test. I said, well, let me just hope that they're going to do this, and they're going to really use it the way it was intended to be used, for real emergency employees like Ms. Boston Ellis that's just kind of crunching our numbers at the end. But it looks like now, in curriculum and different things, we're just going to let everybody just go to work for DESF after they go through the drop. But yet, when they go through the drop, they know the rules. They know that when they get to the end, they're supposed to go away, and someone's supposed to come there. And I'm just real disappointed that we are, again, being the renegade district and not following the intent of the law, and we are taking ourselves out of the employment loop, because as these employees come through, we don't, they don't even come past us anymore. There's no name even on the contract as to even who we're hiring. It's just a way, I mean, we could start hiring teachers and different, I guess we could hire everybody like this through DESF eventually, and not even need any of us approving anything. But I am concerned about the contract. I believe we do, if we're going to do this, we've got to have contract language where someone is covering liability, someone's covering Workman's comp, and those sort of things. But I am concerned that, and in speaking with Mrs. Crisalka, she said, well, Nancy, you know, we don't want to change something in the middle of the year. Well, this is just, school's only been in for a month. And the budget starts at the first of the year in July. So we're just very slowly into the year, that a young employee could come into the system, a young librarian in the district could come, and she could start building the program in new energetic ways. And that was the intent of the law, for us to bring in new people, retire people out. We gave them a bonus, the taxpayers of Florida gave them this five years of retirement savings drop, and now we're looking at the taxpayers and saying, poo on you. We found a way to get around this. So, you know, I just believe it's legalized fraud, and that's my position on it. Thank you.
Okay, Mrs. Superintendent, and Lisa, would you like to come up and answer some of these questions?
We'll give it, we'll give it a rip here first, sir.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I'd like to thank the Board for giving us this opportunity to explore a relationship with DES as we look at special circumstances. Mrs. Stacy, I again take offense at your comments that this district is a renegade district. I do not believe that. Many districts around the state use very similar services to this. We have a unique situation. The individual that we're talking about is Miriam Needham. I'm not afraid to say her name. She's a coordinator by Media Services, and over the past three or four years in our severe budget time, she has also taken on managing our art program, and our music program, and our textbook program. Mrs. Needham is a valuable employee. Had the Board chosen not to go into an opportunity for us to contract with DES, we certainly would have gone out and had the opportunity to interview and at least see if there was someone else that might want to do this job. But since the Board gave us that opportunity, we decided to go with DES. We're very proud of that. We think that our relationship with DES is going to be very productive. The issues that Mrs. Stacy has mentioned in reference to Workman's comp and liability issues are covered under that contract, and there is no issue for you, and I encourage the Board to approve this recommendation this evening.
It's not in the contract, Mr. Tomlin. I read the contract.
Ma'am, it is covered in the relationship that we have with DES.
How is it covered?
I do not know, sir. Mrs. Crisalka, come on up, Mrs. Crisalka, will I get some specific help here, sir?
I know on this contract, it wasn't mentioned.
Ms. Stacy, I think what you're looking at, that we're asking you to approve tonight, is a letter purchase order for services.
Okay.
The contract is a thirteen-page document
Okay.
that you all approved several months ago, establishing the relationship with DES. What we have presented to you tonight is not a full-blown contract, it's simply a purchase order
Okay.
for services that outlines the job that we need done and the amount that we are agreeing to pay
Okay, can you share with me on the insurance, where we, if they do match what the, because I was looking for a contract attached to this document, and I couldn't find it attached anywhere?
It's on page six, under Article twenty-five Insurance. DESF shall maintain and cause DESF subcontractors to maintain during the term of this agreement workers' compensation insurance as provided by the law of the state or nation in which the work is performed.
What about Workman's comp?
Workers' compensation insurance as prescribed
Okay.
by the law of the state or nation.
And liability, everything?
Employers' liability insurance with limits of at least one million dollars
Okay.
for each occurrence.
Okay. I still just have a, I mean, that's, you know, I went all through looking to see if the contract was attached, and I couldn't find any documents, you know, with that, without going back in the old board policy, the old board documents from June. I just feel that, you know, here we go again, and in fact, if you read about this company, they had to go to the Ethics Department, which, you know, the Ethics, I mean, we know that they've, they approve a lot of things. It's not even really been tested out really big yet. And even when the gentleman spoke to us, he even said, you know, this is kind of, we've kind of gotten it through some things. Anything that you have to go to the Ethics Department at the state of Florida to see if they're going to challenge you on it, obviously, someone thinks there's something wrong with this. It's, they're no different thinking than I am. And it's a way to get around the drop. We know it's a way to get around the drop. And if we had not approved this DESF contract, we would be bringing in a new upstart, getting them started in, because it's not like we're keeping her, I envisioned using DESF for like a couple of months layover in a very unusual circumstance. But I'm starting to look, if we've already jumped on something, the first administrator, one of the first administrators is going to retire, and oh my goodness, we're going to keep them on on DESF. I don't know what that says to our younger employees in the system that could come in here. This is for a year, almost. I mean, this goes all the way until June thirtieth.
Yes, ma'am, nine months.
And I know that, you know, you say other districts are doing it. Well, I believe that, you know, pretty much the promised land, I mean, in government, it's, once somebody does it, everybody jumps on and does this type of thing, a way to get around the legislature and get around the people who elected me. But the people who elected me as a school board member based upon the statute that covers the general powers of the school board, statute one zero zero one point four one, where we are supposed to, it's usurping our power also, because the school board is supposed to know what's coming in and approve employment, or they have to have good reason for not approving it. But these are coming to us without even a name or anything on it. It's just a way to usurp the way government is supposed to run and destroy transparency like it's supposed to be.
Mr. James, may I comment?
Yes.
You mentioned the ethics question. One of the things that he provided to us, Mr. DeCastro, when he first came and met with us, was several documents of various governmental agencies that have vetted this process. He did want to address concerns such as yours, to ensure that what he was doing when he established this company several years ago would be above-board and ethical. He has statements from people at the Florida retirement system who has looked at his contracts and has looked at the scenarios and deemed them to be appropriate. If they're not, they put the employees' entire retirement at jeopardy, and we would certainly not do something that would jeopardize our employees. So he has addressed the issue with the Ethics Committee, he's addressed it with the FRS, and he has done so several times over the past dozen years or so, to ensure that changes in statute do not change the legality of what he's doing. I think he is trying to be proactive to address people who do have concerns, to let them know upfront that he has vetted this process.
Because he knows we're going to ask these questions.
Yes, ma'am.
And anything that is that close to the gray zone, you know, obviously, the drop program is clear. When you, when you sign on to that, you know in five years, you're gone, and you're gone for a year, and you can come back. It doesn't mean that we can just continue keeping the same employees on, that's why they get, that's, the drop was in place. It's almost like, you know, I guess, if you get enough lawyers behind everything, they can find what I consider this to be legalized fraud against our state statutes.
The people at the state
A way to get around it.
vetted the process and gave us their recommendation that it was appropriate. I also, before we brought this to you the first time, communicated with various people at the junior college level, at other school district levels, and every one of them said that they had very productive, positive experiences using DES.
And so far as I know, this is the only organization in the state like this, so far as I know.
I don't believe that that's accurate, but I don't have
Let's don't, let's don't get into debating the drop. The whole thing that I would just like to bring to the table is one of the areas that we have had difficulty in the past when we eliminated all our people with knowledge and experience, and we got into trouble simply because we didn't have a way where we could keep some of those people around, and we did, for various reasons, they're not here at the present time. I know we're going into, we're getting ready to deal with the electronic textbooks and things like that. These are major expenses that will be coming down. And we have to have, in the superintendent's toolbox, a person or people that we can, we feel very comfortable with that will be leading us in this process. You know, I was sitting here just prior to the meeting, and I was listening at one school, and they were already moving into that, but they are dealing with one section of it. We are getting ready to deal with a whole magnitude of change here. Okay, if, what I'm, one of the things that we talked about was having a timeframe on this thing, and I'm looking at a timeframe, a time-sensitive timeframe. And I think we brought that up as a board, that this is not a five-year deal or whatever. But I know that we have to have a mechanism where we have a smooth transition in things. And when we have this, when we get to this point where we're getting millions of dollars on electronic textbooks and things, we need to have somebody there with a little experience. I know we want new people there. I know we want to get fresh blood in here, but I'm telling you, experience counts. And that's where I am with it, and this is one of the things. Anybody else?
Yes. And Stacy, I want to let you know, I think you brought up some valid, valid points here. So, and when we went through this, we didn't give you all some instructions. And, Mrs. Superintendent, I think that if you're going to bring a contract or a purchase order, we should have the contract. Then we won't have certain questions. I also think that, as a board, we should set a timeframe for employment that's shorter, because then you don't have new people coming in. And maybe a shorter timeframe would give the person an opportunity to train someone, but I think since we knew ahead of time about this position, maybe the information should have come to us a little bit earlier, you know, you know, not fussing, but trying to lay down some ground rules, because, you know, as I look at who we are putting in the DESF, I wonder, are there some teachers out there that we've given this opportunity to? And so if we haven't, then we are shooting ourselves by saying, only these certain people in this certain position are the ones we're going to give that little extra time to. So, I mean, I talked to a teacher over at Oak Crest and found out she was retiring, and I was like, oh, no, you're such a good teacher, and we need you, you know? And so I want us to look at this a little bit more. Maybe I encourage us to have a work session on it. I do know, Ms. Needham, and I do know the value that she has to our district, so, and I do know the work that she does. So, and I understand the need, but I also understand that we have to be more transparent, because if we aren't, we're going to get calls from anyone questioning us. Miss Stacy used some strong words, you know, but they were valid, because you have to say to yourself, are we going to be a group of, a group that just says, just this certain group of people can come back for a few months just to train, and we alleviate this, you know, other group? Because this should be, if we're going to do this, it should not just be limited, you know? So I think maybe we should have another workshop on it, Mr. Chairman, Mrs. Superintendent, you know, just to voice out more of our concerns, work out some more details, but in order to be transparent, the contract should come with the purchase order.
Okay, now, you wanting a workshop on the, on, yeah?
Well, on the, how we do the terms, the timeline, you know? I think, you know, especially when we realizing, this is, election is coming, it's in November. You may have a new board, who knows? But that, these things need to be drawn out. Board policy needs to be adopted on these lines to really have some guidelines for the board itself, so that when there is a question, the board can look to its policy, you know?
Let me go to Mr. Crawford. Mr. Crawford, you have your hand.
Thank you. Ms. Stacy, Ms. Boynton, you're right on, on, on many of your contracts, or comments. This is strictly a way of getting around drop. When you go into drop, there is a drop date. I mean, there is a, where you know that you are going to be leaving the system. The purpose of it, this was the way it was sold to the legislature when they agreed to it, was that we would use that time to basically train people, make sure that there was a, a, a seamless, uh, uh, transition over. We haven't used it that way. Uh, we're now on the last minutes, and all of a sudden, now there's a panic. Um, we've had five years in this case. As Ms. Stacy pointed out, we've had 20 months of this current administration, knowing that this was, was coming. I agree with you on the fact that if you don't make it across the board, for basically, I think that may be what you're, you're saying, across the board for everybody, that then you're, you're using it to pick and choose. That is wrong, because when the people signed up for drop, they knew what the terms of the program was going to be. So, to me, if you're going to have a work session, the only way you can legitimately have one is you have to defeat this motion tonight, and then go and start all over. Let us do that tonight. Let us stop this bad deal before it goes any further until we've, if we still want to do it, or the board, or whoever the board is sitting at the time, still wants to do it, that it's a clean playing field, and we haven't already started down this road where we've granted it to one person, because I know of somebody else that is probably also going to be coming down this way, that we can't survive without them. The world will end tomorrow if we don't have them, and that isn't true. The first, one of the things I learned in business is the day you suddenly think that you're irreplaceable is the day that you are replaced. So I would suggest, let's defeat this thing, then you can go back and set up all type of criteria, if you still want to go with, I think, just a, a, it's just a bad approach. Drop was there for a reason. We'll do it that way.
Mr. James, I agree with Mr. Crawford. Ms. Stacy, drop is there for a reason. Ms. Needham's an outstanding employee. If there were nobody else that could move into her shoes, that would be one thing, but electronic textbooks is going to be more than this year, and how much longer are we planning to keep this person in place? I think we need to look to the future, and we've got a lot of very dynamic, educated people who could move into that spot, so I'm, I'm with y'all on that.
Can I say one more thing, Mr. James, about it? It's on this topic.
Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd be very disappointed if, if the board took the suggestion of Mr. Crawford tonight. We have an individual that has, is, is ready to go to work, is working with us, is, uh, we have counseled this individual. I'm not sure, I can look to Mr. Cole. I'm not exactly sure what kind of property right this individual has under this, under this situation. I look also to Mrs. Crisalka for some assistance here also. This, we have not cherry picked someone to do something that they're not capable of doing. We have not avoided an issue here at all. We made a very sound decision using a, a procedure and an option that you've given us, and I'll be very, very disappointed i- if you did not approve of that tonight. We certainly take into consideration your interest in wanting to do something down next week, next month, whatever, to discuss this, and if you want to put some parameters on it, that's, that's your prerogative. I'd be disappointed, though, if you didn't pass this tonight.
Mr. James, today I asked Ms. Crisalka. She was very, I mean, I, I got great input from her. She was very honest with me. I can't complain. She didn't try to trick me. She didn't do anything. She answered my questions, and I said to her, Ms. Lisa, what if we didn't have DESF? We would have had to find an employee. We've known for 20 months that your administration has been here, that you were going to have this problem, and she said to me, well, actually, we knew we were going to go this route with it. Until the board votes on something, you don't know that's the way it's going to go. She retires next week. We've waited until the last hour to come, and if we grant it for one person, we're going to have other people come in and saying, well, how come for her? We don't need any more employee morale issues. We need to treat everybody the same. And part of leadership in any business is bringing the next group of people in to fulfill, to fill the shoes. We had all summer, we've known she was going to retire for five years. We had all summer, with no students in school, to bring up a, a young librarian and train her into this position, and, oh my goodness, we get a new president every eight years, or sometimes four. If we, if the entire President of the United States can change in eight years, I'm sure a, a media person in charge of textbooks in a district is not really, the urgent situation that I signed on to DESF for was when we really are in a budget crisis crunch, and we're down to the last hour. That is not where we're at, Ms. Crisalka. We are not, and, and, and I'm sorry, Mr. Tomlin, that, that we didn't talk up, you know, that we didn't bring this before the board sooner. We brought it on the agenda the Tuesday night before she retires, next Tuesday. And this is the way we do business. The last minute, and the sky's going to fall if the board doesn't go along with it. That's crisis management, and we need to stop it. We need to have a plan here and stop managing the district by, from one crisis to another. And that's my position, and I can't support this. If we do it one time, then we've started a precedent, we've opened it up. Once you start it, at some point, the school board has to say, the people elected us to oversee employment and contracts in a district. You guys have figured out a way to usurp that responsibility and get around not only board policy, but around the drop program also.
Mrs. Superintendent.
And so I'm, can't support this.
Okay. Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. This is not crisis management for the last three months, since this is the first time we've gone into any kind of contract with DES, when you granted us the opportunity to begin this process. We did. We went back and forth, Mrs. Crisalka with Mr. De Castro's company, to make sure everything was right, and then, then, on the advice of counsel, we've decided to bring it individually to you. Your, your vote tonight, to me, is a vote against Miriam Needham, and, and that concerns me a great deal, because that's what it is tonight.
That's what it is, Mr. Tomlin.
No, that's wrong.
I understand that you might, or think that. That is my position on this. That is your, that is your-
That's sad that you would think so negatively of the members of this board.
It's not negative, Mr. Crawford.
That that would be, sir, that's exactly the way it's being interpreted by me, that you are, are, that you're saying it that way, and you're trying to say, well, now you're just against somebody, and so that's why you're going to vote. No, we're voting on the principle of what it, this is representing. And what this is representing is completely against the whole purpose of a very bad program to begin with, which was the drop program, but it's the program in, in place. And we had the opportunity to, to start getting somebody in line for this, and it was chosen not to do that, and that's wrong. And I really am offended that you would sit here and think that I'm voting against a particular person. I'm not. I'm voting against because it's a bad idea.
Okay, now, this is where we are. So this is where we are, board. If we voted down, what I'm also hearing is that we want to bring this back to a work session, so we can clarify some other things that we are concerned about. Okay, now, I've heard just about everything that everybody has said here. And, board, I think at, at this point, I think we need to make a decision on whether we want to approve it, table it, or whatever, or vote it down and bring back, bring it back to a work, to a work session. So at this point, at this point, I will-
I have a question.
Mr. Crawford has moved a question. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. All opposed? Signify by saying nay.
Nay.
The, the motion failed five zero, and I will ask-
She was four. Four more.
Yeah, that's fine. For one. What I'd like to do at this point, at this point, I'd like to schedule a work session to bring this back, so we can, uh, have a discussion on it.
And, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a suggestion. Why don't you schedule that work session after the new board is sitting, and so that they can take a fresh look at the-
That will, that will be fine.
Good suggestion.
Brenda, I wanted to vote a nay on that as well.
What's the nay on it?
Okay, the motion fails five zero. May I have a motion to, uh, to approve the amended corrective action plan of Francis Marion Academy? May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
It was booed by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. Any discussion?
Well, I want to say, I want to thank, um, Ms. Pasada, uh, and the committee, Ms. Stacy, all for going over and working with, um, Francis Marion. As I looked at the amended, with the help of the school board, I was really pleased with it. I know they still have some work to do, but with support from Marion County School Board, working with the charter school, it shows what we can do together. So I'm quite pleased with what we, they're going to be presenting.
And I'd like to, I'd like to say, Ms. Pasada, she was incredible. She was sitting there with her studious little look, and she was going through it, and she was popping the questions, and she was moving stuff around, and that was, she looked like a CPA at work. She was something else. And so, thank you so much, both of y'all, back there laughing, back there in the back. Ms. Chris, Ms. Boston Ellison, and Ms. Alice.
One of the things I just want to, just share with the staff, there were some ideas out there that the school board was working against Francis Marion. And what the superintendent brought to us was a rejection of our idea that was not sound. And one of the things that this, this has provided for us is the fact that people know that we have a, a very competent staff that's willing to work with people to resolve these issues. And when we hear these things again, folks, let's remember that we have professional people out there that all of us have known for years and have worked with for years, and we should never get to the point where we make decisions and think that it is because somebody dislikes something. It is based on the fact that it was not a sound practice. We did it again tonight. I don't have a problem with that, but I do want to commend the staff and the superintendent and everybody else for rejecting that and putting it back where it deserved to be, and for them to work out. You want to finish?
I'll talk in a minute.
Well, thank you. Okay, so what I'm saying to you more than anything else, we appreciate the work and the cooperation that went on with that committee. I want to thank you guys again. Thank you.
My point, my point, Mr. James, when I was concerned, was that it was going to leave, it wasn't going to come back before the board for a final look at, but, um, because we all got involved in it, it ended up coming back before the board for a one-time look when it was not going to. And because, um, you know, we brought it to the forefront, and we kind of pushed the envelope a little bit, but they brought it back to us, and they had not planned on doing that. It was to go straight to Tallahassee, up or down. And so our, our activity on this did change the course of it, and I appreciate the work that the bookkeeping, the finance department did for us.
Alice, I see you shaking your head back there. And if you want to come and answer that, if you want to just say, it was not like that, I can understand it. Okay, okay, thank you.
Y'all told us it wasn't coming back.
Okay, I just, let's go ahead and vote on the thing. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed five zero. May I have a motion to approve the following donations? $1,272.84 to Bellevue High School from Bellevue High School Boys Soccer Boosters. $2,500 to Bellevue Middle School from their business partner, Pers Orthopedics, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,500 to Community Tech Adult Education from Monarch University LLC. $2,500 to Dr. N. H. Jones from their business partner, Reed Orthodontics, via the Public Education Foundation. $1,268.78 to Dr. N. H. Jones from Target. $1,000 to Evergreen Elementary School from the Public Education Foundation for many grants, nights and, uh, night and day 365. $1,500 to Forest High, High School from Slack Construction Incorporated. $1,300 to Hills Crest Public School from Jeff L. Saylor, CPA, PA. $1,000 to Lakefront High School from EAP Enterprise, Inc. Classroom and Media Center, a material valued at $1,678.82 from Osale Middle School from Karen Cox, The Learning Wheel. $2,500 to Osale Middle School from their business partner, Reed Orthodontics, via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500 to Reddick-Carney Elementary School from their business partner, Michael Critter and Associates LLC, via the Public Education Foundation. $2,500, uh, $2,000 toward Highland Elementary School from Target. $5,486.60 to Westport High School from the Public Education Foundation, Duke Energy Grant. $2,500 to Westport School from their business partner, Monroe Regional Medical Center, via the Public Education Foundation. $3,000 to Vanguard High School from Michael "Ew" Waddle, MD, and Ludi "El" Monte, MD. May I have a motion in a second?
Second.
It was booed by Mrs. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. Any discussion?
Can I say something?
Sure.
I wanted to thank all of the businesses for giving us $33,500. You value our education system, and that's what it's all about. You're involved in our kids' future. I also want to give special recognition for Karen Cox from Learning Wheel. I know they've closed that. She's not just given, she's given, um, all of, so much of, of the materials from Learning Wheel to tools for teachers, so thank you, Ms. Cox. We really appreciate it. And Bellevue Middle School, Pesci Orthodontics, they have triplets who went through Shady Hill. They're now in eighth grade, all straight A students, so, um, we appreciate your support with the school system. Thank you so much.
You already did the thank you for it.
She did.
You did a wonderful thing.
She did a great job.
I'm sorry. I, I had to say something about Ms. Cox and Pesci. You can, you can-
I just ditto.
Okay, she did it. Okay. All in favor signify by saying aye. Meeting reminders.
This is the last debate. I'm, I'm doing it right now. Just, okay.
She was so excited about all our donations.
I know, yeah. I trust.
The motion passed five zero. The next administrative briefing and work session is scheduled for Thursday, October 9th, 2014, at 9:00 AM. The purpose of the work session is to receive the 21st Century Community Learning Center summative report, as well as review the district-wide attendance zone, bus purchase, and the, and the address, the board position of the board meeting, and address the board's positions of the board meeting. I will ask the board members at this time for comments. Mr. Crawford, we'll start with you. Ms. Stacy.
No.
Ms. Ely.
I always have something to say. I went to the Engage in Education last meeting that they had, and all of the subgroups all agreed that there's one common factor to student excellence in school, and that's parent involvement. So, um, parents, be there with your kids, like Mr. Christian says, be there for your kids. It's really important. And, um, everybody agrees with that. Parents, you need to be involved in not just, not just sending your children to school, but be there when they come home. Help them with their schoolwork if you can, and meet with their child's teachers if you have questions, but get involved, and your kids will succeed. Thank you.
Ms. Boynton.
Thank you. I, I do have one thing. Uh, before the, before the board meeting started, a parent came in, and she had a, a little conference with me, and she was really wanting to address the board on a situation with her child. But I want to tell the community, and I want to thank Mr. Tomlin, and thank Mr. Villanello, Mr. Christian, who introduced the parent to Mr. Villanello, uh, that she had a bullying problem, and she was very afraid to address it to us, but she was, but I, she brought her packets, and I promised her that I would give- and I promised her that I would give each of you the packet. Because I think it's important for us, when a parent has a complaint, that we really listen to them. But I also want to say, just from Mr. Tomlin hearing that she had a complaint, he addressed it instantly. So, I mean, hats off to you, Mr. Tomlin and Mr. Villanello and Mr. Christian for that because that shows that we're really concerned about issues that parents do have. But the issue was bullying. And to me, this would be the second time I've heard a parent complain about bullying. So if we could have a workshop with that student, Student Services coming, showing us how we handle bullying situations, you know? I think it would be really good because it seems to be, if we can head it off now and everybody, I mean, I know all our staff is on the same page, but I want all of us to be on the same page on what the district is doing about bullying.
Thank you, Ms. Boynton. Mr. Kovac?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman?
Just comment, we'll come back to you for that. I know, I know that you will be reading something that, but this is not the point.
My apologies.
No problem. You knew to the system.
I have no comment.
Okay, thank you. Mrs. Superintendent.
Thank you, Ms. James. And board members, I want to reiterate once more that I'm very, very disappointed in your rejection of the D E S contract this evening. You empowered this administration to utilize that strategy and tonight you've done a completely 5-0 role reversal and that's very disappointing and very confusing for our administration. On a very positive note, the schools in the state of Florida just received notification of the number of National Merit Scholar semifinalists that we have here in Marion County. We do have five students. They all happen to be from Vanguard High School. We hoping, we are very hoping that, hoping that they advance to the finalist stage and when they do, I'll be happy to bring them to you and show them off, so to speak. I mentioned to you also at a recent meeting that our Guidance and Testing Department, along with the College of Central Florida, was hosting a college and career expo and I invited you to participate and I'm not sure whether any of you were able to do that. I want to share with you that over 1,000 of our students actually registered to attend this event, but I can also share with you that evidently the College of Central Florida has some sort of a counting or clicker device and over 7,000 individuals, students and adults, attended this particular event. So a special thanks to the College of Central Florida for participating in that, for hosting that. Special thanks also to our high school guidance counselors and our Guidance and Testing Department. And then a final word tonight. Many of you know that Rick Langford, our Deputy Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction, is retiring after a very productive and lengthy career as a teacher, a dean, assistant principal, and finally as deputy superintendent. I've known and worked very closely with Mr. Langford for over 37 years and my personal thanks to him for his dedication to our entire system, our students and employees. I'd like to invite you, this Friday afternoon, we will be having a farewell reception for Mr. Langford here in the boardroom from 3 o'clock to 5 o'clock. I'd love to have you attend if you would so choose. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mrs. Superintendent. Some things I just wanted to share with you now. At our last work session, we had a group of businesspeople that came in and presented to us as for nothing more than a learning exercise, just sharing some information on a balanced scorecard. Talking with some of the former superintendents that are out there, they said we've always had some form of this, whether we call it a report card or whatever. They've always used the data that we have. And I would like to commend Kevin Shealy for being here and Davis Stuffaw from Kid Central, and especially Pam Brewer, because Pam Brewer really have, I guess she may be the guardian of our data, of data in terms of.
Part of it.
Part of it. But she provided us an opportunity to let us know that we, as a school district, really have the material that we seek. Because this is one of the things that all high-performing administrators have, is data on their kids and sure enough, it's there. So I just want to thank the superintendent for allowing his staff to be part of this because it's one of those things where I would love for us to work together as a board so we can have a lot of the data that we are requesting here. We'll be, we will get it almost at an, at a, end of a nine weeks and et cetera. I would like to just share with you now, we are statewide and in the form of some really influential groups are really addressing the opt-out of high-stake testing or delay the high-stakes testing until we are prepared for it. And one of the key things, I will tell you again, we are not asking to stop requiring us to have higher standards. We are asking that we either opt out until we get to the point where we're ready for all the testing and we have vetted the material. And this is what we will be looking for down in Orlando because the Florida School Board Association did adopt an opt-out resolution, but they were concerned about the wording because, as you know, we are not opting out of higher standards that we want for our kids. We are just asking that we either stop it until we get to the point where we can adequately administrate it, administer them, or we can vet them to the point that they provide that. So it's okay that we really join a movement to really express our concerns about the high-stake testing. And just like I've said one time before, this high-stakes testing is almost like what happened with the lottery dollars. We had it for one purpose, which was diagnostic testing, and we start doing everything else with that money when we specifically had it designed for a particular thing. So this is some trying times for us. This will be some times where we'll have to make some decisions and we will have to work together as a, as a team. And this is important to me at this point. Okay, finishing up my little comments for today, I will now, will recognize our acting attorney, Charles Kovac. Mr. Kovac?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and board members. I'm notifying you that advice is needed regarding the pending litigation, which is styled Secure Communications, Inc. versus the School Board of Marion County, Florida. Excuse me. The school board is represented by attorneys Henry W. Jewett II and Meredith Stevens with the law firm of Rissman, Barrett, Hurt, Donahue, and McLean, P.A. of Orlando. Pursuant to Section 286.011, subsection 8 of Florida statutes, which is known as the Government and the Sunshine Act, on behalf of attorneys Jewett and Stevens, I'm requesting a session with the board for the sole purpose of discussing settlement negotiations and, excuse me, strategy related to this matter. I will ask the board secretary to cause reasonable public notice of the time and date of this session and the name of the persons attending to be published. It is suggested that the session be held at the conclusion of your board meeting, which is scheduled for Tuesday, October 14th, 2014. As required by this statute, only the chief executive officer or designee, board members, and legal counsel can be present. I will ask a court reporter to record the session, also as required by statute. Her notes will be fully transcribed and filed with the clerk of the school board. Upon the conclusion of the litigation, the transcript will be made public record.
Mrs. Superintendent?
Mr. Chairman, I recommend the board hold an attorney-client session pursuant to Section 286.011, print 8, Florida statutes, to discuss pending litigation.
Okay. If there is no objection, I will instruct our attorney to schedule the attorney-client session to be held at the end of the October 14th, 2014, school board meeting. Are there any objections? Seeing none, Madam Secretary, please schedule that work, schedule that session for.
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Before addressing a expulsion matter, I will, I wish to acknowledge that board members have received the alternative placement list for students through the September 5th, 2014. Are there any parents in the audience who wish to speak on behalf of students regarding a disciplinary matter? Seeing none. There being no further business, may I have a motion to adjourn? It was moved by Ms. Boynton, second by Mrs. Ely. All in favor signify by saying aye. The motion passed 5-0. The meeting is adjourned at 7:33. Thank you.